Deuce to the boards and committees, plus the public. The ninth school study that we've commissioned Civic Moxie. Susan Silberberg is representing Civic Moxie. And she'll be talking to us, presenting in a couple of minutes. Cara Bruton over there has also been working on this project. And she's going to be assisted by Margaret Wood in the -- helping us with the public outreach as we go forward. So just talking a little about how we got here. Those of you who've been paying attention, remember, I'm going to say the word, and hopefully I won't have to say it too much after this, the B-Space process, which came up with the answer expanded place with multiple elements focusing on, one, Lawrence School, two, the devotion school adding to that project that had already been in the pipeline, Driscoll renovation and expansion, and coupled with high school expansion. So with respect to Lawrence, that's done. The devotion piece, five, I believe, additional classrooms were added to that project from the original scope. And that's approved by the SBA. And that's well in progress and construction will be starting, what, in the fall?
July.
July.
2016.
Okay. Driscoll was submitted, a statement of interest was submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who declined participation. And the high school, we've submitted an SOI, a statement of interest, thank you, to the MSBA. And that one is pending now. We're expecting an answer in another month or two, or three. But after B-Space, the enrollment growth has continued. We're faced with the nonparticipation by the MSBA. And we also had a recommendation from the override study committee that we reopen the process to consider a ninth school as an alternative to expand in place. And that's what we're doing here tonight. And when we decided to do the ninth school study, we decided that we would do it right. And we hired a team of professionals headed by Susan to perform a rigorous data-driven analysis of our options, including those which involve eminent domain. And that's probably the biggest difference in what this study has looked at versus B-Space. So the study in the RFP that Susan was working from examined potential sites for a ninth school and also looked at expansion of existing schools, but also including the potential use of eminent domain. The report is going to be released publicly and will be on the town website tomorrow. It's there right now, I'm told. But portions of the report have been redacted at the advice of council because we are proposing with some of the sites involve the use of eminent domain, which is a legal process. And we received advice of council that releasing what we thought the sites would cost could really jeopardize our negotiating position. So the study did take longer than we originally anticipated because we went into a lot of detail. And there was a lot of deeds that needed to be researched and drawings that needed to be done and considered. And it took longer than we thought. I just want to explain a little about eminent domain. Eminent domain is a process where we purchase or we take private land where we would have to pay full market value, but we have a right under certain circumstances to take private land. And it's something you have to think hard and examine. It's not something you do willy-nilly. It needs to be part of an important municipal purpose. And I think a school is an important municipal purpose. So let me just tell you a little about what's going to be happening tonight. So I'm going to be turning the podium over to Susan, who's going to be presenting the report to us. And then we're going to hear from Cara Bruton, who's going to give us a staff analysis of the report. And then I'm going to bring the discussion into the committees, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen for questions, comments. But we're also going to be circulating cards. And Ms. Woods with the blue.
Do you have these around?
Has cards where you can submit questions and comments. And I would hope that at this stage, at this meeting, the questions would be focused mainly on clarifications, things you don't understand, things you might want to know that aren't being said. And not so much, I like this or I don't like this. There's going to be opportunities for those kinds of comments at a later stage. And then after the board has its discussion, what we'll also do, as the board is discussing, we'll be looking at the cards and we'll see if there are questions we can answer now or comments that are raised that we can raise now, for those that we can answer now. And for those that we can't answer now, we're going to take them back. If they require research, we'll research them. And then we'll be posting questions and answers as this process goes forward on the website, on the town website. So after that's done, the board does its thing. We might have some votes. We might be ready for some votes. And then we're going to have a multi-week, multi-month public process, which I'll describe after the -- after we do.
Do you want to do it now or do you want to do it after?
Yeah, okay. So let me describe the way we're going to be doing the public process now. So we're going to have two open houses, one in the morning, one in the evening. The first one, I believe, is going to be on the third of November.
That's the evening.
That's the evening, evening of the third of November. And which I'll note for the Board of Selectmen is a Board of Selectmen night. So that's one that we're not going to be able to be at. And Cara, why don't you, or can you describe how that's going to work?
So I'm Cara Bruton, Economic Development Director for the town. I work in the planning department. So there are three meetings that we have penciled in that are looking pretty good. And those are also on the town website as of right now. And as we update information, we will on that page. But so we have Tuesday, November 3rd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's going to be at the Denny Room over on the health building in the lower level. And the idea is to do an open house style presentation. So rather than tonight, we've got to get through a lot of information. The idea is that we literally have posters. Joe Connolly has agreed to join us, other staff from school, building department, planning, so that if you have a specific question, you can just come ask about that question, whether it's about a specific school or about, you know, school districts, you know, whatever that might be. So we're going to do two of those open house style, one November 3rd, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The second one, November 12th in the morning. We're trying to capture the before-work, before-drop-off crowd, that 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. That's going to be in the fifth floor, in this room, school committee room. And then we've got a public hearing scheduled for the evening of Thursday, December 3rd. Time to be announced, place to be announced, and then we'll go from there.
Right. And the hope is after the public hearing, we would then bring the decision back to the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. And that in the December to January timeframe is when we would be making decisions. So that's kind of an overview of the public process. So with that, let me turn this over to -- oh, yeah, please.
Good. Thank you. That was terrific. I agree with all of it. I just want to say it's such an important moment. It's very exciting, in a sense, because we've been talking about a ninth school for years and years. And it's just very important to acknowledge this moment that we -- I'm just very pleased to be discussing this, incredibly grateful to Cara Bruton in particular, who has borne this in her backpack and carried it up the mountain. So thank you, Cara, for all the amazing work you have done in leading this process. As we've all said for, you know, a number of years now, this growth is a great problem. It's great in the sense that we have so many families moving to Brookline for the schools. But it is a problem in the sense that we really do struggle with the balance of how to accommodate that growth. And in the ninth school process, as Neil said, it really has been a data-driven and rigorous, sort of expert-driven process, which is exciting. We've typically done things within a citizen-led way, which is great for transparency, but it's actually very important to also have the expertise from something, from someone like Civic Moxie and all the different resources you brought. So thank you, Susan, for that. And then the other thing is that we have really, in this report, as Neil said, tried to balance transparency and the advice of attorneys on what to disclose. So there were many, many discussions about how much of this could be disclosed. And there were, I won't go back and forth, but there were, can we disclose anything? Can we, should we disclose everything? And where we landed was, our question to the attorney was, we would like to disclose as much as humanly possible that does not compromise our negotiating position. And so what you see is probably, I don't know, 96, 97% of the final, with some things redacted. I'm certain there are going to be people who want that last 3%, but just on the advice of attorneys, we really can't because it does compromise the negotiating position. But it's 96% of what is there. So I think that's really great. And thank you to everyone, including Town Council's office, Charles Lynn Murphy, and eminent domain expert, John Leonard, who helped us get to a place where we could disclose as much as possible. It also means that there are things in here that are sketches that we're going to all have reactions to and the public will have reactions to. And so I think it'll be helpful when we get there, just to, everyone to understand the caveats of what this is and isn't at this conceptual stage. But thank you very much. We're very grateful and excited.
Thank you.
Susan, I think you should say a little something about any redistricting that you see is hypothetical.
There are so many caveats on the redistricting maps. And I will probably jump in there if Rebecca Stone does not beat me to it, just to say that the redistricting maps, everyone's going to anchor on them. They are completely hypothetical. There is a whole separate public process that has to go on about redistricting, public meetings, you know, there's, it's a whole process. And Rebecca can describe it if people want, but it is, these are truly hypothetical redistricting maps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? I have a cold, so bear with me on that. It's a little strange because I want to talk to you, and I want to talk to you, and there's a screen there and over there. So I'm going to be floating a little bit in terms of looking. I'm really pleased to be here. This study has been kind of a tough work for many of us, and it's been a joy to work with staff and Board of Selectmen and school committee over these past months, kind of smart, dedicated people. So I'm pleased that this is finally going public and we can get into a discussion about what the study says. I would say, just to start, that the goals for this meeting are to introduce this site study to the public, to review what our charge was, so you understand what we were asked to do, and understand our process and the results that came about, and then to overview the six finalist sites and to answer questions. And I'm sure you're all pleased to know that those six finalist sites are not in the 3% we're not releasing tonight, but you'll get to hear what those finalist sites are. And, you know, success tonight really is if you understand the approach of the study and if you understand how we got in some broad way to the six finalist sites, and then understanding how we're setting up for next steps and everyone's clear on the process. I'm Susan Silberberg. I'm principal of Civic Moxie, which is a local urban design and city planning firm. I teach at MIT part-time and lead the firm. Urban Focus and New Atlantic Development are also on our consulting team. And New Atlantic Development is a local developer, Peter Roth. He actually did Olmsted Hill development here in Brookline, very knowledgeable about local construction practices, the kinds of things we needed. And Urban Focus is a real estate development advisory firm. Do a lot of work in my firm with Sandy Stroud, the principal of that firm, giving expertise so that we understood that what we're proposing could actually be built and realistic kind of order of magnitude costs within that, really trying to be as specific as possible to answer everyone's questions. We bring land planning, real estate development, urban design and architecture to the team. So I'm going to talk about the enrollment trends and what's been done to date, talk a little bit about how we got six sites from the 26 locations we originally identified, what our charge was, our approach and the criteria that we used to select sites. We're going to talk about student school assignment models and how we looked at those redistricting areas. And then what, how we used initial target areas that were set to really hone in on where we were going to look in the town. And then we thought a little bit beyond the traditional school model that was given to us as the charge and why. And then we're just going to go through the first cut, 26 locations, we got six finalists, why those. And then I'm going to walk you through those six finalists, look at conceptual site plans, look at redistricting maps and how we got to be and what some of the issues are for each of them. And then we'll take questions, and then Cara will take it from there. So we've already heard about enrollment trends, and I hope everyone can see this slide, that, you know, 2005, we started with one enrollment, and then there was an addition of 1,487 students and 56 sections within the 10 years. So at present, you know, we've grown quite a bit, 53, 75 in terms of enrollment, and there are 257 K through eight sections within the school. And I'll say that sections really means a homeroom classroom within the study. How that challenge has been met to date has been, you know, adroitly and very kind of carefully thought out and meeting it as it comes. But a number of things have been happening in order to meet that enrollment challenge, which means that some parents might not even see where the pressures are. But all the custodial and building trades within the schools have been moved out. They moved to Lars Anderson Park and the two sheds that are by the skating rink and by the auto museum. Eleven of the pre-K, the beep classrooms, have been moved to private rentals and have office space that's been rented within the town. And then administration functions have also moved to other sites. And that has made way for some of those additional sections and those children to where we are at the present, which means that there really, there is no more room for expansion within the schools using these methods to accommodate, to accommodate the growth in enrollment. So what that means in looking forward, we've talked about 2005, 2015. Now we're looking at a projected enrollment of adding an additional 539 children, 32 K through eight sections in the coming years to 2021, the future. And that includes 27 sections that would be in a new school. So that would be K through eight, three classrooms, three sections per grade, and five net new from the devotion school renovation that project is going on. And that is projected to 2021. I'm going to go back. I feel like there should be a drum roll or something along this. I'd like to get the six sites out there, so that's kind of on the table, and then I'll talk about all of the other things. We went from 26 to six locations. And the six locations are the Cottage Farm School, which is on private land adjacent to Amory Woods and to Amory Park, on the Mass Association for the Blind parking lot, and on land that is owned by the BU residential properties. The Harvard Street School is on Harvard Street and on one site, which is the TJ Maxx site, which houses TJ Maxx and the bank building. The Center Street School is on the two town-owned parking lots in Coolidge Corner on Center Street. The Village School is on a number of sites, but the main ones being the Stop &amp; Shop site in between Brookline Village and Coolidge Corner, and small portions, the parking lot next to it, which is part of the Stop &amp; Shop. And then tiny portions, we're talking 3,000 or 4,000 square feet from the Walgreens site to make way for an access road and to the condos, the backyard of the condos on St. Paul Street to accommodate that. The Walnut Street School is on the site of the former Lincoln School and also includes the U-Haul site along Route 9, those two parcels. And the last one is the Isabel School, because we think since Isabel donated the land, she gets some due and having something named after her. But that's at Lars Anderson Park, not within the park area, but is actually located within the area used right now for the maintenance sheds, the DPW, the building department and parking, which is kind of behind, on Avon Street, behind the skating rink and the auto museum. And that's all on Brookline property within Lars Anderson. So those are the six sites that we investigated. What we were charged to do was we were asked to use town-generated selection criteria and focus on private property. So as Neil Ruschinsky said, there is the, you know, possibility of eminent domain here, but also looking at both public and private together, really trying to take a comprehensive look. And identifying and analyzing sites for new K through eight schools. That would be a traditional neighborhood school in the model of what Brookline residents understand today. And that's organize the information for clear understanding and sound decision-making by the school committee and by the Board of Selectmen. How we approached the work was really iterative, but it followed this basic path of we refined, we reviewed and refined the town school program and site criteria. We researched case studies for both traditional schools and concept schools, which I will talk about in a minute. We conducted a broad search of properties throughout the town, both by viewing Google Maps and Google Earth, looking at the town assessors' maps and other maps, town-owned land, and driving through town. And then we reviewed data on those sites, ownership records, deed restrictions, prepared a map of possible sites, and created a matrix and applied the criteria. And then we tested the sites using town-generated student school assignment GIS models to see how they worked within districting models and do they meet the neighborhood school criteria. And that allowed us to narrow that initial list of 26 locations to six locations with input from the town staff and the board chairs. When we got to that point, we developed schematic site layouts to test the suitability of those sites. And I want to emphasize, these are not architecturally designed sites. So they, we know that the program will work on the site, but they obviously need the love and care of kind of a deep dive in terms of how they really fit within context. So please take them as they are, as schematic layouts. And then we prepared conceptual level development cost estimates using current data around school building costs and other factors to get some order of magnitude in comparison between the projects. So the criteria, what did we use? We had basically four buckets of criteria that we looked at. And the first one was around access and location, around the traditional neighborhood school. Ideally, it would minimize walking distances for schoolchildren, good pedestrian and bike access, good vehicular access, so enough room for vehicles to get in and out for drop-offs, proximity to public transportation would be a plus, and central to school density, the student density and growth, which I'll talk about in a minute. The site characteristics are another category we looked at, which is, we were asked to look at a site or combined site size from a few parcels assembled that would be three to three and a half acres. Also told, you know, three could be on the lower end if we could find adjacent playgrounds off-site that could be used, and maybe up to six, depending on the site. We looked at topography. Was it appropriate for a school site? Did it work for playgrounds? Any environmental issues around wetlands? Could it accommodate playing fields or were they adjacent? And we also looked at things such as if there were existing buildings on the site, could they be reused for some purpose? And was the shape of the parcel conducive to a school? And then we did a standard parking across the sites in conjunction with working with the school staff that said that about 60% of staff for parking would be about right, which comes out to about 60 spaces for a school, given there is an average of about 100 staff in the K through eight elementary schools. And we also looked at legal and regulatory issues. So were there deed restrictions that would prohibit certain uses? Open space that was protected by Article 97 for exclusive use in that way had other challenges, kind of political and just replacement challenges around open space if we were to use it. Would we have to relocate existing uses? If we did take land by eminent domain, you have to relocate residential, office, all of those, in addition to paying for property. Was it a historic district, either local or national, historic buildings and conservation land? And ownership, we clearly were looking at, you know, was this one parcel under one owner? Was it multiple owners? Politically sensitive is probably no surprise to you. Every parcel in Brookline is politically sensitive. So that's a checkmark across, I think we actually took it off the criteria list because we know it's politically sensitive. That's why this is so challenging. Potential property swaps, perhaps? We tried to get creative. Could the town swap property instead of purchasing? And then could we integrate complementary uses? Or if the town needed other uses, was there a way to bundle them? So we were really trying to be as creative as possible to come up with what this would be. To talk a little bit about the student school assignment models, the redistricting, it's important to keep in mind that any construction or creation of a ninth elementary school is going to require changes to the student school assignments, so no matter where it is. It's also important to understand that those changes will affect those with children not yet in the system through second grade as of 2015. But older students than that most likely will be in the high school or beyond. And you'll be through with all of the college, you know, pain about applying by 2021. And so it's important to put that into context. I'd also like to point out that even if a ninth school is not built, there's still going to be redistricting because as the enrollment grows, they're shifting around of where that can fit. So it's not an issue that's only relevant to the study. So I'd like to show the current school district map, and I really want to acknowledge all the work that Cara Bruton did on these redistricting models, which were very labor-intensive and took a lot of time and thought. The current school district map, first you should know that today, 40% of the school enrollment in Brookline lives within a quarter mile, what we consider to be walkable distance to the school that they attend. So that's a figure that you should know. And what you see here are the district outlines on the map. They're not actually the district outlines. They are the outlines of the enrollment area of where children come for the school. So this is actually, Cara modeled this based on actual addresses and school assignments. And the circles around the existing schools show the quarter-mile walkable radius. So you get some sense about where children are actually going to school, the catchment area, if you will. And then you get a sense for each school where the walkable part of that catchment area is. And that's the current day status. When we talk about initial target area, what we did even before the staff worked on that map was looking at what, where the areas we really should be targeting, where the school, a new school should be. And that criteria was based on staff really looking at that walkable area and trying to understand where would a new school fit that was more than a quarter of a mile away from other schools that would allow a catchment area for a new neighborhood school. And then also understanding where was the most density of students and kind of potential growth around new development. growth around new development projects that are in the pipeline within the town. And what resulted was this map where the beige area, which is mostly north Brookline, I'm going to go back for one minute, because this is an important point. If you notice Heath School, it's a very large catchment area. And it's not because that's the largest school in the district, but it's because it's an area that has very few children. They don't live on the golf courses. And that whole area within the town south of Heath School, so that's a very large catchment area. So it's actually not surprising when the town did a map of looking at where are the likely target areas for a new school, that it's not only north Brookline. It actually kind of comes down along the east as well, because, because of that whole issue of no students there, kind of in south Brookline for that wide swath across the town. And so we came up with this, this is the map that we started with, that showed where we were, where we were going to try to target. But we did look everywhere, because we felt it was important to try to get a picture and to be able to say to people, yes, we looked at all of the possibilities. And within that, there were two target areas that really stood out because of their location relative to other schools and because of where the density of students were. And one of them is up around the Cottage Farm area, you can see at the top of the map. And then the other one is really kind of from Coolidge Corner to Brookline Village, centered around the Stop &amp; Shop area on Harvard Street, where the two considered to be kind of target areas within the larger school area. Just to point out the challenge in this, our original charge was three and a half acres for a site. What we have here is a kind of random area of Brookline, it shows the high school and then over to where we are here tonight. And we've done a three and a half acre grid. So the white grid on that map is showing what a three and a half acre parcel looks like overlaid on the town. And many of those sites, as you can see, there are multiple houses, you know, probably, they're multifamily, they're condos, within a three acre grid. So we're looking at a complex problem of where do you find those three and a half acres? At the bottom, what we've done, there's the three and a half acre square box on the left, and then we've just done two schools to give you an idea about existing schools. The middle graphic shows Lincoln School with the recreation fields. And then the right-hand one is Pierce without the fields across School Street, across the street from it, to give you some idea about what the existing school sites look like. So, excuse me. So that challenge of made us kind of push beyond the box a little bit and say, well, what if we searched beyond a traditional school model? What if we looked at other options to try to kind of widen what some of the possibilities might be in town? And so we thought about this in terms of three typologies. We thought about it as a traditional neighborhood school, the charge was forgiven. And then we thought about what if we looked at a mixed-use model school, or a concept or theme-based school? And how might that change, you know, what we looked at? Could it open up possibilities? And the mixed-use school is a trend in certain parts of the country, and the idea is it's a school in other uses. It might be retail, it could be commercial, it could be shared facilities, and sometimes ground-floor retail. And it can often be on a smaller site footprint with shared program areas, which may, can make it very efficient. And it can share recreational facilities with nearby parks or public areas. And the concept or theme-based school could be STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, or add art to that for STEAM, or some other curriculum focus, or different classroom or learning experiences for that. So we looked at how that might kind of broaden the mix a bit. The mixed-use case studies are in the report, as well as the concept school in the appendix. But one good example is Teachers Village, and you never hear Newark, New Jersey touted for anything, but in fact, it's actually the hot place right now in terms of education and innovation. And Teachers Village is a mixed-use development, it's got two charter schools, it's got a total of 1,000 students, a ground-floor retail, there are also housing for teachers and kind of other things, the arts within that village. And it's been extraordinarily successful, attracted, there's tax credits, there's lots of investment from private companies, including, I think Goldman Sachs, into that model. So that was something we looked at, what do those look like? And then the concept and theme-based school study, Baltimore Design School is a good example. This is an existing building, but could it just as easily be a new building? This won major awards, an excellent design firm, Ziggersknead in Baltimore. But an adaptive reuse housed in an abandoned factory that has this collaborative and progressive educational environment that also shares with community uses. So the community comes in and uses it, so kind of a wonderful way to share. So there are others in, this is just a sample of some of the things that we looked at within the study. And we thought, okay, if we're going to do this, would that change our site criteria? Because that would be important to know. Would it really kind of shake things up? And in fact, it doesn't change much. We're pretty confident that the site, the 26 sites we looked at would be the same. And in fact, most of the sites that are on the finalist list also work for, most of them, not some, more than others, but that they work for a concept or a theme-based school. What doesn't necessarily work is minimizing walking distances, because it's not a neighborhood school. And in fact, you want it to be central to the whole town, as opposed central to one area of the town. And so that's a criteria that would change in site selection. And we wouldn't need such a large site anymore, perhaps, because people would be open to a different kind of model. And perhaps playing fields wouldn't be necessary either. Many of these schools have playing fields on the roofs and other models. And so, but most of the other criteria still hold true. And certainly the, the kind of, I think, commitment to excellence of design and innovation and curriculum are there as well. So the first cut, I'm not going to go into this in detail, and this is hard to read for all of you, but we had 26 locations. And many of those locations had more than one site. So we looked at a location, and then we tried to identify all of the parcels in that location that might be appropriate to use for site assembly if we needed it. And they were really spread, we looked throughout the town, even beyond the target areas. And they ranged from up on Commonwealth Avenue, looking at some of the BU properties and privately-owned properties, to, to some of the open space in the town, to privately-owned parcels and things that we thought might be coming up for sale, or could be, you know, open to purchase. And that came up with 26 locations. You can see all of them in the appendix of the report, along with our criteria charts, going through with information on each of them, including the assessed value. And to get from those 26 to six, we applied the criteria. And some of the thought process, just to kind of try to condense it for you about what we did, we asked the following questions. Out of all of these sites, are most of the criteria met for any given site? And if not, are other criteria met in a way that justifies choosing a less desirable location? So if some site had just some overwhelmingly good things that kind of rang about it, could you, could you manage with some other things that weren't as good? And that kind of allowed us to filter through a few. We also, you know, publicly-owned land, if it was near a desirable privately-owned parcel, would, what would outweigh us using the publicly-owned land as opposed to the privately-owned land? So thinking that publicly-owned land, the town already owns it, it would be prudent to try to use that when possible and forego on the private purchase. So that kind of settled out some locations. Is town open space with Article 97 restrictions the only option in a particular area of town? Or do we have other locations that would be more suitable so that we weren't necessarily addressing the challenges, the regulatory and the political challenges of pulling open space kind of off the table for use and trying to replace it somewhere? And we also had a question, is the site simply too inaccessible to be practical? And at what point does that weigh against other criteria? So we tended to look in groupings. We looked at north Brookline, Coolidge Corner, north Harvard Street, and then the Brookline Village nearby, and kind of applied these criteria according to those groupings throughout the town to try to come up with a range of sites that were appropriate. And that got us down to these six sites. Within those locations, we tried to select the best parcels that minimized the need to displace anyone if the town was using eminent domain, really tried to minimize negative impact on the community and try to maximize positive impacts on the community. We did the conceptual site layouts, development cost estimates, the modeling, and then we really listed challenges and opportunities for each, for each site. What that included, we're not going to talk about costs tonight for reasons that were discussed earlier, but I would like to tell you what we included, because we tried to be as realistic as possible. But also understanding, and this is difficult, that costs that we do today are going to be different in six weeks from now. But that order of magnitude that enabled us to compare across the sites, because we use the same methodology to price all of the construction costs. And we included everything that a development project would include. These were development spreadsheets pro forma, looking at all of the costs that might be built into the project, the contingencies, insurance, general conditions by a contractor, to come up with as an accurate snapshot as possible. We also, Cara Bruton and the town did the student-school assignment GIS models for both, and looked at the big picture. And some assumptions for those models I'm going to go through quickly. We assumed no additional building capacity other than the ninth school at 550 children. It did include growth assumptions from new developments permitted or in process, including Hancock Village. All students within a quarter mile of a school, including the new proposed ninth elementary, whatever site it was, were assigned to that school. Schools were then, students were, schools were then assigned the closest students to them proportionally up to the capacity of the school. And in some cases, the assignments of the model students were balanced in order to take into account significant geographic features, ridge lines, hills, things that made it impractical for walking, as well as a kind of equal distribution of out-of-district students as well as free lunch students to get, you know, a proportional mix. This is the student-school assignment, this is the current, current situation, where the black lines show the catchment area again for each current school. And the color area shows actually what the school district zone is, with the white areas being the buffer zones. So you can see what is on the map if you go to the town website and look at the school buffer zones, you can see what each school assignment area is. And then you can see that match to what actually, where students actually go in terms of the larger catchment area in the black line. So I'd like to walk you through the six sites to give you a sense about what they are in the details. We're going to start with the Cottage Farm School, I'm going to start in north Brookline and work, work south. The Cottage Farm School looks at the area adjacent to Amory Woods and looks at privately-owned land. We started looking with a larger group of parcels and narrowed it down to smaller parcels. And what we have here is there's Amory Park and Amory Woods, which is conservation land. And then we're proposing using the vacant land, the backyard of a BU-owned property, a house, and another BU-owned property, as well as the parking lot of Mass Association for the blind, in order to construct the school. And it would face on Mason Square, that's right, is it, no, not Mason Square. No, Clive's behind it, and, yeah, it is Mason Square. Mason Square, so it can face in both directions. So we have the school, and again, these are schematic. And this sits within the neighborhood of Cottage Farm, and we think it could work quite well within that context if designed in an appropriate way with a residential community. This school program would use the adjacent Amory Park and playing fields as a recreation area, but we've left room for a playground for younger grades. There's room for kindergarten through second grade to be closer on site. This is the kind of parcel assessment we did. The left-hand side shows the parcels we originally looked at. On the right, you can see what we're actually using. So we're using parts of the, the open space on the parcels and not touching the buildings within that, to give you an idea. And the bottom grid, and all of this is in the report, shows the ownership, the size, and the assessed value for all of those parcels. So we're using one Mass Association of the Blind parcel that is now parking lot, and then two for BU-owned property. This is what the student-school assignment map looks like. So for all of these, the black line shows the existing catchment area of students for a school, existing as of 2015, just as in the other maps I showed you earlier. And then the colors show you the school assignment with the Cottage Farm School in. And in each of these, the, the ninth school is the, the purple, the kind of darker purple color. So you can see how the school assignments kind of shift. But I think that's all I'm going to say about this for now, because I want to get through these for questions. They're all in the report. Just a summary, this is a two-story, 100,000 square foot school, they're all 100,000 square feet. This would be two stories. There's no acquisition of private buildings needed, only land. We have 49,000 square feet of surface parking. We've tried to meet zoning wherever possible. It hasn't always been possible, it's listed in the report where we haven't done that. And this is a traditional school model, and it, there's no through-access to Amory Woods for a school to use the playing fields, so the students would have to walk along the sidewalk. They wouldn't cut through Amory Woods, it's conservation land. This is subject to local historic district oversight, and it, traffic patterning would have to be addressed in terms of Amory Street for pickup, drop-off, and that's true for most of these sites. The next one is a Center Street School. So this one is in Coolidge Corner, utilizing the two town-owned parking lots. And what we have is the school resting on the, the parking lot behind the buildings on Harvard Street, behind the theater, the Gap, and CVS, utilizing that parking lot. There would be parking underneath the building, replacement parking, and then a parking garage across the street on Center Street, south parking area. So this is, you know, it's building up Coolidge Corner and replacing that parking lot, still the same amount of public parking. We've replaced all the public parking on site, plus, plus, you know, staff parking as well within that. We're using two public properties, so there's no land purchase involved here, there's no land cost. And this is what the redistricting map, the Center Street, and I really do want to emphasize that all, no matter where the school is, that student-school assignment will go through the same process as would happen with any decision about buffer zones, public hearings, discussion about that. This is what that map looks like with the Center Street School. It's three stories, 100,000 square feet. There's a parking structure with parking, 179 replacement spaces total. Harvard Street retail would remain, so we're not touching that, no land acquisition. I'm going to move on with that. This one would have no traditional playgrounds, so there would be playgrounds on the roof on this model. The Village School is on the Stop &amp; Shop site and some adjacent parcels on Harvard What this would entail is this is a mixed-use concept, and so the Stop &amp; Shop, would this would be, this would necessitate a partnership with the owners of Stop &amp; Shop and a rebuild of the Stop &amp; Shop grocery store on this site. So we're proposing mixed use. The school would be in the front of the site, and Stop &amp; Shop would be below it, and then a parking garage, a parking garage in the rear of the site. What we're proposing is a Stop &amp; Shop parcel and the adjacent parking, and then utilizing a piece of, it's a complex arrangement, for utilizing part of the condo rear yard on St. Paul Street and a tiny sliver of Walgreens for an access roadway. So coming in, just to go back, coming in and access is off in a kind of drop-off circle, kind of in the complex itself. And scrub-a-dub would be used as a temporary staging area for parking, and so this would be a phased approach, where a Stop &amp; Shop, there'd be three phases of construction. be a phased approach, where a Stop &amp; Shop, there'd be three phases of construction to allow Stop &amp; Shop to remain open until it could be rebuilt in front and then converting to the parking garage behind. This is what the redistricting, the model, looks like for student school assignment There are 289 parking spaces on this scheme to replace, they would have to replace the Stop &amp; Shop parking. The existing grocery store would remain in Phase One and would be moved into the new ground-floor retail space during Phase Two, where the parking deck would be built behind. And scrub-a-dub land would be used for temporary parking in the adjacent parking while that was going on so that the store could remain in operation. This is complex phasing. I see all of you kind of going, "Are you crazy?" But in fact, what we were really trying to do was to make sure that if someone said, "Did you really look at all the possibilities?", that we could say, "We looked at all of the possibilities, and these are all doable." And they really offer a chance for discussion about what the town really wants. The Walnut Street School is next. It's the former Lincoln School on Route Nine, as well as the U-Haul site there for those two. And what we would be doing is, you know, full renovation of the school and an addition on that property with a link between and green space, and utilizing the Borelston Street Playground for recreation. Probably a bridge over Route Nine in terms of that. It'd be up for discussion. We put it into our price schemes. So this is town-owned land with one parcel, the U-Haul parcel would be purchased. And this is what the Walnut Street School, student school assignment map looks like. And I will say, all of these schemes are very similar in that they all have about the same proportion, and all of them except one, I think, exceed the percentage of students who go to the school, you know, or that are in the quarter-mile walking radius. So they all keep that or exceed it from what is currently in existence. So the existing school would remain, full renovation, a new two-story, about 45,000-square-foot building. There'd be some surface parking and new green space. There's ledge on that site, so it would have to be blasted, but the town owns a major portion of the scheme, so that helps compensate for that. And again, the bridge across Route Nine. The Harvard Street School is on the TJ Maxx site, which also houses the bank on Harvard Street. And this scheme would have ground-floor retail, possibly the bank would be relocated there, and we are not touching the existing TJ Maxx. So the idea is to leave TJ Maxx. Relocating that somewhere would be difficult, but we're using the rest of the parking lot and then incorporating the bank and ground-floor retail. The school would be above, and parking would be below grade in this scheme. So a more compact model, again, playgrounds on the roof on this scheme, similar to Center Street and to the Stop &amp; Shop and to the Village School. This is the site we're using, one ownership. And this is what the student school assignment model looks like for that scheme. So most of these, we're replacing the parking for TJ Maxx, so it's all together underneath the school, including the 60 spaces for the school, and we're relocating retail within the project. This is another complex project, a mixed-use project, complicated phasing, not undoable by any means, but more complex than the others. And then the last of the six sites is the Isabel School, which is utilizing the existing parking lot area and maintenance shed and Department of Building sheds on the Lars Anderson site. And what we proposed is tucking the school down really behind, closer to Avon Street. It has to be on Brookline-owned property, and so it's right at the Brookline-Boston border. You can see the line cutting through. I don't know how many of you know, but a portion of Lars Anderson is actually in the city of Boston, even though Brookline owns it. So the school is tucked in there, and the real goal here was not to intrude upon the rest of the park, but to reutilize the space. We're relocating the DPW shed on the site, and then the building department uses about 10,000 square foot would be off-site on this scheme. And I will just say that there are opportunities here, we feel, kind of looking in a broader way of what kind of campus-like complex could this be on the site, but we've looked at the school only on itself. And we've stayed within the area that is outside of the restricted area that has been proposed for just open space on the site. So we've really tried to kind of tuck this in. So that's the area we're looking at. And this is what the student school assignment map looks like. Because of where it's located, there isn't a huge change in how many students would be walking. It actually, I think, probably increases a little bit, who can walk within a quarter-mile radius, or certainly within a half a mile radius because of where the school is located. So it's a little counterintuitive, but it actually works quite well with the student school assignment model. Not sure what to tell you. The school's on the Brookline property. I think I've pretty much mentioned everything here. I just, I would like to say that all of these schemes, while we're not talking about costs tonight, they're all similar in some ways, not the same, though, not the same by far. The next steps, the Board of Selectmen and School Committee really need to choose a preferred option and define next steps by January of 2016, and then commence a due diligence and potentially kind of go through a state funding process in 2016. The earliest town meeting actions would be spring of 2017, and then the earliest possible school opening would be 2020. So that's where we are.
And before we get to that, to the process, to the points on Susan's slide, there's going to be some public process between now and January that will be talked, that we mentioned earlier and will be highlighting at the end. By the way, if anyone has any questions that'd like to, or comments they'd like to submit to us, just raise your hand, and Margaret will collect them. So Cara Bruton now is going to be giving us some staff analysis of the sites. What was just presented was kind of an overview, and now we're going to be the first shot at applying the criteria to start the discussion of perhaps getting us down below six.
Okay. So again, my name's Cara Bruton. I'm the town's Economic Development Director. Work in the Planning Department. My background is civil engineering and urban planning, and I was asked to work with the school department on this Ninth School study. In speaking with school staff, building staff, as well as, to a lesser extent, but also keeping them in the loop, parks and preservation, we wanted to share with the board some, you know, out of all these criteria and all these sites and all the pros and cons, we wanted to just kind of highlight some thoughts that might make a difference between looking at these six sites. So criteria that we talked a lot about, you know, Joe Connolly and Mary Allen and I and even the previous school administration, was sites that were adjacent to playgrounds, especially playing fields seemed to make more sense or kind of bubble up to the top, avoiding relocation of uses if at all possible, especially residential uses. That's something that we as staff did not think the town had an appetite to, you know, take on, but could be wrong. Thirdly, that to look at locations that produce the greatest percentage of walkable homes, so getting that walkability number at least the same, if not up a little bit. And then if the school committee does think about concept schools, you know, in the future, then in that case, we would want to look at a more centralized location. So I'm going to be kind of jumping right in and telling you from a staff recommendation how we think two of the six sites are best suited for the Ninth Elementary School. And this is mostly by process of elimination. None of these sites, as you guys saw, none of these sites are easy. None of these sites are awesome. All of them have cons, but I do think there's a couple of sites that I'm going to be recommending to the boards that we take off the table for reasons I'll get into. So at the bottom of the list, one thing we talked a lot about, again, at a staff level, was complex, oh, sorry, complex operations and site acquisition and development. So with the Harvard Street School and the Village School, also known as the TJ Maxx School and the Stop &amp; Shop School, those would, as Susan went through and is very carefully documented in the report, there are very good models across the country of having mixed-use properties, of having, those would require third-party developers to develop a mixed-use building and then kind of sell the school back to the town, never mind site acquisition. If we're taking these properties in anything but a friendly manner, we would need to relocate any tenants, whether they're residential or commercial. We would need to think about relocating those uses to places that are comparable to what they have now. They're also producing tax dollars right now, and maybe could be producing tax, more tax dollars in the future if it made sense to the community. But the bottom line is, put all that aside. Pretend like, oh, that's fine, and we don't, you know, that's no problem. The day-to-day operations. So there's, you know, the pumpkin fest that just happened at Lincoln, and there's the car wash that competes with the Coolidge Corner Arts Festival every year in Coolidge Corner. There's the day-in, day-out operations of how a school is run. And imagining that happening, even any lawyer, I'm not sure we could get an agreement that works through all those issues of, you know, eighteen-wheelers coming in while the school kids are taking a nap, and I don't know. It is done in other communities. Susan's given examples. But we as staff are recommending that those two come off the table because they're just a little bit too aggressive, we believe, for where Brookline is at. In the middle of the list, I've got the Center Street parking lot there. It's very close to Devotion School. It's even in the map, in the concept plan, and when you see it. We have not done traffic studies or any kind of traffic analysis for any of these six sites, which we would need to do moving forward. But clearly, Center Street and the Coolidge, the height of the Coolidge Corner district area is, has a lot of issues with site circulation in and out already, especially during the devotion peak hours, which is about to expand. And imagine another school where at the same time of day, there's cars moving in and out of that area. So we wanted to highlight that. Secondly, like the two retail properties we just talked about, there is not an adjacent, immediately adjacent play area or playing fields, and the play space would really need to be on the rooftop in order to make that site work. Third, we've talked about how it's in the center of the commercial district, which means during construction, we would need to be figuring out how to provide replacement public parking while the school and the parking garage are being constructed. And then finally, the kind of long-term impacts of what that might be in the Coolidge Corner businesses, farmer's market, et cetera. Also in the middle of the list is the Old Lincoln School. I should have put the Walnut School. Sorry. So the middle of the list is the Walnut School. The big reason, as we've been talking about past practices, past uses of Old Lincoln and uses that we know are going to happen of this space in the near future, it's a swing space for the town, not just for the school, but for town buildings. We have many buildings throughout town. They will continue to need to be renovated and fixed over a long period of time. To give you a sense, the devotion, as you know, devotion is using that in fiscal years 16, 17, and 18. We have Driscoll or the high school might be using that in part coming up in 2019, although we are looking at leasing yet another private property. Even if that happens, we would need the Old Lincoln School for the high school. If Old Lincoln were permanently used as a school or for any other use, and we needed about the same amount of space in any year of swing space, Peter Rowe was estimating that that would cost us, this was, you know, about a year ago now, that would cost us about $560,000 a year on top of any renovation costs, like we've been doing at the private spaces. Every time you lease new space, you have to renovate it, and that's all sunk cost that's gone. So that's kind of a value to the swing space that we have today. Looking back the last 20 years, this is a little bit of color coding, but the green rows and green squares at the bottom over the last 20 years are school uses that have used Old Lincoln. So there is the heat school renovations, the high school renovations, Baker and Lawrence, most recently Runkel. Interspersed between there, the police department cycled through Old Lincoln, the health department, Town Hall did for a couple of years. And then we did have a couple of narrow windows of gap years where we did lease out Old Lincoln to New England Institute of Art, and then had the ART production of Sleep No More back in 2009. So there's only a couple of years you see there on the blank, without a letter on the bottom, in the last 20 years, when we haven't needed Old Lincoln as swing space. So now let's look, in the future, the building facilities and school department believe that, you know, every 20 or 30 years, somewhere in there, depending on what's going on, each school and town facility needs to be renovated for something. So if you start doing the math, we've got eight elementary schools. Each one takes two or three years each. We've got a high school that's estimated to take three or four years, depending on how we phase construction or phase renovations. Baldwin Sewell Lynch, maybe that could all be done in the same year. Town buildings, you know, Town Hall, DPW, the community building, the health building, recreation buildings. So if we were to kind of play this out over the next 30 years, again, we start to, we don't know what the problems are going to be, but we know that we've had them in the last 20 years, and we know what a normal maintenance cycle is in the next 30. So that leaves the top of the list, which is certainly still not easy. We as staff are recommending to the boards that we look more seriously at the Cottage Farm School concept and the Isabel School concept. And the highlighted pros and cons we wanted to bring to your attention. For Cottage Farm School, the pro is that it's, out of all of the concepts, increases the most households that would be in walking distance from current conditions, which aligns with Brookline's neighborhood school concept. Also, having the adjacent Amory for larger play area seems to be a very big pro for the site. And the con is that it's in a local historic district, and this is something that, you know, is not just swept away by claiming Dover or some zoning special permit. It's a whole separate general bylaw. It is a serious process. It's going to be very hard to do anything in a local historic district. It doesn't mean it can't be done, but it will require additional public process, negotiation, and support to proceed. The Isabel School, the biggest pro for us as staff, again, is that, as you saw in some of those modeling of potential redistricting student assignment areas, is that it seems to be the least disruptive for the, especially the northern part of Brookline, and it does help with the growth that we are expecting at Hancock Village. On the other hand, the school where we've kind of tucked it in is just outside that quarter-mile radius of, say, like Buttonwood Village. It's, you know, but it's about a third of a mile away, so it's, you could imagine some kids walking, but it's not the most walkable out of all the scenarios. So another con that we've heard from individual school committee members and from school staff is that we might want to think about keeping that parcel on the table until we figure out what we're doing with the high school expansion and renovation, or even other municipal uses and their needs. And then finally, you all need to understand that we've, we're showing a cartoon of moving DPW off into Boston, which is not fully resolved, but we're showing a space for them. In addition, the building services, we're kicking off-site completely, which does need to be done eventually, but we have not identified a site of where those building facilities would go. So that's where we're at with pros and cons.
So I guess we'll bring it into the board, and you guys have been collecting cards.
Why don't we start with Q and A from the board? And then...
Right.
But just saying, you know, so we've got seven or eight, really, good questions. I'm going to give them to Susan to field, let's sort of put them in order, to make sense.
Okay, but we'll start talking.
We'll start with the board.
The board should start first.
Right.
So I guess the, my first question is, if we don't do a ninth school, what's the alternative?
Well, if I could. That's yours, Jim.
Yeah, sure.
I think the option to building a ninth school is what we've been doing now for several years, and that's building in place. We have split classrooms in the existing buildings to create two classrooms from one. We've added small additions on school property. We've looked at modules, some rental space. Unfortunately, we've maxed out that option in the last few years. And certainly, building in place would not meet the needs of a twenty-seven-room school. And so the bottom line would be, four or five years from now, you may find eight or nine classrooms built in place, but you eventually would end up increasing enrollment to meet your space needs.
Increasing class size.
I'm sorry, class size. For example, this current year, we have approximately 5,400 students in 255 classrooms plus five rental spaces. We have two modules, and we have three rental spaces at the Pierce School. So we have 260 classrooms for 5,400 students. So the average class size, system-wide K-8, is about 21, 21-plus. That doesn't mean you can mathematically achieve that in every case. So that class size average this year of 21, system-wide, has a range from, I think, nineteen, seventeen, eighteen to twenty-seven. I would speculate, five, six years from now, with our increased enrollment pushing 6,000, the average class size might jump to 23, 24, and now your range might be 25 to 30, or maybe even higher. So clearly, class size or the number of students in each classroom would be impacted if we can't find a solution to the need for 27 classrooms.
The concern about class size is a significant one, and one that the school committee's been long attending to, and it's kind of a core value. But what concerns me more about not building an additional, a new school, is that what comes with the 27 classrooms of the new school are the common facilities that support 27 classrooms, the offices, the library, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, all of those common facilities for 550 students. If instead, those 550 students are added into our existing schools, we need to build that capacity of common areas for those 550 students, and we need to do it all the way across town. And I'm very, because we already have two schools that have cafeterias that are so challenged that they have five consecutive lunch periods, beginning shortly after 10:00 in the morning, and you can't do six and seven and having kids have their breakfast at the same time they're having their lunch. So what concerns me, and I don't think we've seen the financial projections of this cost, but it's not simply having 27 or 28 or 30 kids in a classroom, because you can hire a second teacher into that classroom if the classroom is physically big enough, but that the cost of adding on to five cafeterias and tearing down and rebuilding five gyms, or adding second gyms at schools, and all of these addition, additional common facilities would, we would get less desirable educational outcomes at a considerably higher financial cost to the town with that direction. So that, to me, that's the big concern about what would happen if we didn't, if we didn't build an additional school.
And just to be clear, I mean, there are, there are multiple options for what could be done, and so part of what we're hoping to do over these next couple of months is use this public process to get input on those, right? One is increase class size and expand the common areas in many, many building projects simultaneously. One is to have a few building projects, right? Try to add nine on to a few different buildings. We're just doing devotion. Pierce is already spilling into rental space. Lawrence just got done. I think New Lincoln only took a few, and that was a strange space, because you had basically a 3.3-section school, which is very bizarre educationally and, you know, maybe not tenable. You'd have to put other things there rather than K-8 to make it work. Runkle's out of space without eminent domain. We just did that project. So, I mean, that doesn't leave that many. It leaves Heath, and it leaves Driscoll, and it leaves Baker. Heath, there's space, but the redistricting implications, just, we all saw the map. So if you added a section at Heath, there's land, but the redistricting is complicated. If you added at Driscoll, it's very challenging, you know, without looking at the common spaces and looking at play space, all the things that we talked about, you know, a little while back, in terms of, you really need to do a feasibility study, which, you know, town meeting voted that money to do the feasibility study, to say, what would you need to do to that building? And then the same thing with Baker. I mean, Baker, you could potentially put a little school on the other side of the field, two-section school. I mean, there are different things you could theoretically do, but every one of them involves many, many building, multiple building projects at the same time, the cost estimates. And one thing we did talk about at the, so anyway, there's many options, and we are hoping to use this public process to get reactions, because obviously, we do need a, what if this doesn't work? It will require votes of town meeting, it'll require an override, so we do want to use this process to get a clear Plan B. And the other thing that I'll say is, there was a potential item in the CIP to do a many hundreds of thousands of dollars, perhaps million-dollar study to figure out really, really, what would expand in place cost for this number, because you have to do site assessments of every single building. And I think the initial sense of the school subcommittee, the Schools' capital subcommittee was that a million dollars was a lot of money to spend for a feasibility study on expand in place, to get that down to a very specific number. I mean, I guess if we hear in this process that there's a tremendous public appetite for that, we can, that wasn't voted yet, but we could, we could talk about it, but it just seemed like a lot of money to spend on something that seemed, at least at the, at the obvious level, not, you know, that it wouldn't meet the need, given how much the enrollment has expanded since, since B-Space and some of the other factors. So, anyway, that's a short summary of some of the conversations we've had so far.
Open it up, Ms. Stone.
I don't have a lot to add. I thought what David Pollak said was extremely compelling, and for me, it's never been a question of, what do we do if we don't build, decide not to build a ninth school? For me, it has always been, how do we get to this very clear conclusion that we reached? Can we, in fact, build a ninth school? It has always been a, that has always been, for me, been the question. Is there, ever since MGT told us in, whatever it was, 2008, that we needed a ninth school, but there wasn't a good site for it. So, so to be here and to actually have something, I mean, this is an extraordinary accomplishment. Susan, thank you so much, and Kara also, just for the, what the, what has been put into this. And, no, it's not easy, and heaven knows, there's a long way to go, but what this is saying to us is, we can do this. And so for me, I would like to say, great, let's finally do this, and see whether, see what it's going to take, and where the best, you know, where the best site is. But to know that we can is, is just a tremendous leap forward, and I'm very, very excited to be there.
Questions, comments? Ms. Helen.
Not sure how to work these things, not so technologically able. For me, the issue is that we have this burgeoning school enrollment, and I believe that it's not fair to the kids who are in the current elementary schools to pack them even more than they are now. They're jammed. And with kids having lunch at 10 o'clock in the morning, that's just, doesn't even seem to be that healthy to me. So I, I think that the numbers speak for themselves, and we need to respond to that, and we need to respond to it in a responsible way. And I commend Susan Silverberg and Kara Brute for coming, you know, for doing this work, because I do think they have come up with some excellent alternatives, not perfect, nothing in life is perfect. And I think we need to move forward with this and settle on one of these and go forward as quickly as we can, so that we're not leaving kids in these situations of, you know, or have faced with the terrible consequence of having to raise class size. That's, to me, is unacceptable.
Professor Mueller.
I just want to remind you that class size isn't just about that teacher-to-student ratio. It's about the physical space and the students in there, and while you may be able to fit more desks and chairs, that space does not become conducive then to the kind of educational program that we provide and want to provide. Our classrooms are dynamic, they have workstations, students move around, multiple students talking at one time. We need adequate storage space. We need space for the additional adults that come with the students, around math specialists or literacy specialists, psychologists. If we have classrooms where we truly want to be inclusive, they have to be spaces where students with disabilities, if they have physical disabilities, need to be able to move around and move through. So I just want to give you a little bit more detail around class size.
Great.
Ms. Daly.
Yeah, I think all of us hoped at, or wished that we were seeing a bubble in that, as that enrollment kept growing, but, but it's clear, when you look at the numbers and you look at the trends, and particularly, when I look at the huge number of daycare centers around town that are, that seem to be absolutely full, as well as our schools, it's, it's clear that this problem isn't going away, and, and the numbers that Dr. Connolly gave us are credible as to, you know, where we're going with that. And that being said, I think that we need a ninth school.
I'm not going to get used to this. Kara, are there any questions regarding whether to do a ninth school versus other options?
Yes, there are two. The first one is, could we solve the 10:30 a.m. lunches issue now, if it is truly a pressing issue, before waiting five-plus years and spending tens of millions of dollars?
I think the first solution would be...
You're fine, don't touch it.
The possibility of not using the cafeteria for lunch, which is, it has its negatives, but its positives. If you didn't schedule all the students into the cafeteria, you could have lunch programs going on at the same time for different grade levels. But that has an impact on the classroom, has an impact on the whole lunch program, and it was not, would not be our ideal situation. That's many times used as a temporary solution. In fact, at Devotion School, a K-4 population potentially moving to a building in Coolidge Corner, we may have, are in modules during construction phase, we may have lunch in the classrooms. Now, that may work for one or two years, but you may not want that as a long-term solution.
Dr. Fisher-Mueller.
And additionally, it's a supervision issue as well. Our teachers have their duty-free lunch at the same time when students have lunch. If students are eating in the classroom, in each of those individual classrooms, there needs to be supervision in each of those individual classrooms, and we wouldn't need the contract on that.
Pollak.
I'd just like to speak a little about the philosophical approach in relation to answering this question, that the capital subcommittee is, is trying to hone and, and implement. And that approach is that we're looking, just briefly, looking historically over the ten-year period, when we've found the place to land 57 and counting additional sections. It started out relatively, relatively painless. There were a lot of underutilized spaces, and some of it was, was cost shifting or pain shifting, or just belt tightening. For instance, one of the most dramatic ways in which classrooms were achieved was by taking away dedicated space that was being used by the extended-day programs throughout the town. So when my children were at Driscoll School, there were two classrooms that extended-day had 365 days of the year. They just, they just had them, because they weren't needed. And there was additional spaces that they had under the same circumstances. And all of those spaces pretty much, even down to like closets, just about, have gone away throughout the, throughout the school system. So that was sort of the easiest first step, where it wasn't really hard to make the fiscal decisions about how to address real needs. What we're trying to do, that's over, and now, we spent $4 million to build four classrooms at Lawrence, that we just opened in September. So it's, these decisions are very costly. And the discipline that we're trying to be really, really deliberate about is to only spend that kind of money on super-high-quality, permanent solutions. And that when we're doing temporary solutions, bridge solutions, that we, we want to be equitable, and we want to maintain educational outcomes and, and be high quality, but we want to do it in ways that keep the powder dry, that save our, our financial resources so that they can be invested in the long-term solutions. And we have some really good examples of things that we've just done. The cost of the two modular classrooms that have just been opened at Baker School, over five years, is like $400,000 total, and it's leased, so it's even played out over time. And, and then they'll go away, and we're leasing space, three new classrooms plus support spaces for Pierce, in a rental building right next to Pierce, just outside the windows here. And, and that's a relatively short-term lease. Now, what we're trying to do tonight is put in, is move ahead with putting in place the long-term solution that these short-term solutions bridge us toward, so that they can eventually go away. So while we, we are very, our ears are open, and we're very careful to listen to staff when they bring problems to us that need to be solved right away. The problem of five lunch periods at Driscoll and five lunch periods at Baker, while we've heard that it's challenging, staff, school department staff has not come to the capital subcommittee and said, this is intolerable, this cannot be sustained for another year. We need a capital solution now to, to reduce the number of lunch periods. And we take our, we take our guidance from, from the school department, and then we help them solve the problems that need to be solved.
Ms. Bruton, there's another question.
Yeah, there's one more related to this, that whether or not to build a ninth school, and that's, how about 10 schools and build the top two? How about 10 schools and build the top two?
Do you want me to do that one? Build 10, ninth and 10th, a ninth and 10th school?
Build two.
So, so one of the questions that we get a lot is, what is the risk of overbuilding? And so just to be clear, as to what is not included in these 27 classrooms might be helpful, one thing that is not included is the beeps, bringing beeps back into the building. And there are 11 of those, I think, in rentals. So that's not included. We're not giving extended-day, dedicated space. We are not dealing with suboptimal classrooms. Suboptimals are ones, a number of them are, suboptimals are getting dealt with in the Devotion renovation, but we're not dealing with the others. For example, walking through one active classroom to get to another active classroom, which is disruptive. I think we are dealing with the science lab with no water. Anyway, there's a variety of ones. I think we're dealing with music being held in the auditorium, but anyway, there are a variety that just aren't perfect, and we're not dealing with all those. We're not reducing class size back to where it was before the enrollment started to go up. We are not bringing the 40 staff back into the buildings, that we're, we've just moved to Webster Place. So there are, just to be incredibly clear, there are a lot of things that are not getting solved with this 27, but this 27 is absolutely a big piece of the solution. So is a 10th school, you know, there are many other things here, and I think it's a community decision about the priorities to build a 10th school, but it's... decision about the priorities to build a 10th school, but it seems that, at least from the need of the 27 here and the need of the high school, those two things are absolutely top priorities. And so, it doesn't seem that a, bringing beeps back is going to outweigh the high school anytime soon. And so, that would be, that would be a short answer, which is, we're not overbuilding. That's for sure.
I think you just hit the, I think you just hit the nail on the head, Susan, when you were talking about the high school. We all know that we have to address the enrollment issues that are moving up to the high school, and that is going to be an expensive proposition. And so, we, we're talking about a ninth school plus a major high school project, and both of those, we would have to go to the public and ask for them to vote for debt exclusion overrides. And we have had very good support from mass school building assistance with the projects we have done to date, but we suspect that, you know, there may be a point at which they say, "Okay, Brookline, you've had your share." And then we would have to do perhaps one of these projects without any help from them. So, it's, it's the reason, no, we're not contemplating a 10th school, I think, as, for many of us, as a simple financial reality that, you know, what it's, what it's fair to ask the voters to, to take on and what, what we can do in our, our budget situation. Because you, you have to realize, and we're, we're thinking about this, and this is maybe not as obvious, you know, if you're not, we're crunching those numbers all the time going through the budgets. But the, when you add an additional school, you are adding administrative staff, you are adding janitorial staff, you're, you're taking on a number of expenses that go into the operating budget in it, you know, and teachers, obviously. So, the, it's not just the cost of that building, but it's also the implications for your operating budget. And, you know, I think, as I say, with, with the additions we've got coming online, plus the high school, that's a lot, I think, for the voters to swallow already.
Scotto?
When I, excuse me, when I looked at this, when I first saw this, I thought, yes, indeed, I see where those two schools could be built, and each one is solving a different problem that we have. One is really dealing with North Brookline. The other is dealing with the possibility in South Brookline. Now, while I completely understand what Nancy is saying about the implications for the tax rate, the money it will take to build this, if we are not going to have to have 10 schools, then the town needs to look at their own policies about how we're dealing with growth. We need to get the 40B question under control. Because when you build a 40B, you add certainly affordable housing, but you add much more non-affordable housing. And if you look around town at what's happening in the multifamily districts, you see that many of those big old houses are being made into, instead of one dwelling or two, they're being made into three or four. So that what you're doing is, you are adding places for people to move in who will have children. And while we do want to have turnover in Brookline, we want to have a vibrant place to live, and we do want to have affordable housing, we need to be more in control of what is happening in terms of our growth. So I think it is incumbent upon the town to think about what we can do in terms of zoning and in terms of controlling the proliferation of 40Bs so that we in Brookline can be more in control of where we can put affordable housing and have less of it in the hands of the developers who will put it exactly where they want.
Ms. Stone?
So, I just want to quickly applaud the fact that the question was asked at all because it gives me the sense that, that the public has grasped the size of the problem, which is an incredibly important first step for us. And, and the good news is that if, in fact, we continue to grow at the rate we've been growing and, and have need in the long run for another school, and I emphasize "long", "long" run, that this study has really positioned us to answer that question of whether and where we might be looking as a town for that really completely and really well. And so, we have a tremendous resource in this study, having looked so broadly across town at what our options are, so that, so thank you so much for the question. And again, I think the best news here is that we do have options should we need to go in that direction.
So, what I'd like to do is propose a motion. Oh, no, not on this topic. I'd like to propose a motion on the construction of a ninth school. And the motion is this. Construction of a ninth school is the preferred solution to addressing continued enrollment growth in the elementary grades in the Brookline Public Schools. Staff is directed to conduct further planning and analysis in support of this decision. Any discussion? Then I'm going to take the votes of the two boards separately. So first, I'll take the vote of the Board of Selectmen. Selectman Daly?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the Chair of the Board votes aye.
Selectman Franco?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And Selectman Franco, after consultation with the State Ethics Commission, he's been advised that participation in the slight, in it, he will be, he, he's been advised to recuse himself from participation in the site selection process as his participation would violate Section 19 of Chapter 268a. So, he's not here tonight. School Committee?
All right. Ms. Rem? Yes?
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Ms. Scotto?
Yes.
Ms. Sharlovsky?
Absolutely, yes.[1045.76][1045.76](Laughter).
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
I will note that Dr. Jackson is here, not because she has recused herself, but because she is in Virginia with a previously scheduled matter.
So now, let's move on to, do we want to accept the staff's suggestion on the top two choices? Any discussion or questions? Yes?
Yes, I will. I've, I've made this argument before and when we've been in executive session, but I wanted to publicly make my argument one last time. I realize my, my ship seems to be sinking, but I'm going to give it one, one last shot. I am very favorable toward the idea of a concept school. I think that science and math is an area in which our school curriculum could use enhancement. And I, so I like the Old Lincoln School as a location for a concept school because it's the most centrally located. I also like it because if at some point our enrollment does go down dramatically and we say we don't really need nine elementary schools, that one is in the best location because of its, its being more central to become the early childhood center or, or fill some other need at that time. I appreciate that we have, it's been a very valuable resource as swing space. I, I think though, in part, we, for many years after Proposition Two and a Half went into effect, we did not maintain our buildings very well. And some of our having to do total rehabs on buildings like this one because they had deteriorated quite a bit over the years was a legacy of that time period. I think we have a much more robust program to maintain our buildings now, and frankly, I would be shocked if you proposed to me in 10 or 20 years that we redo Town Hall once again. So I think a lot of those buildings that we've done, you know, we've done, and we wouldn't be doing major, major projects on them again. I do realize there are some, the, the plan is now to use the Old Lincoln for the high school when devotion gets done with it. And I would, I would prefer a solution that adds on nearer to the main campus of the high school. My son was one of the kids who was in Old Lincoln for his freshman year when they were, we last did work on the high school. And he happened to be in a more advanced Spanish class than the freshman level, and he used to literally run from Old Lincoln back to the high school and be late every time he went to Spanish class. So I, I think that, you know, we could do better in terms of an adjunct building for the high school. And, you know, we should get that underway as well and so that we wouldn't need Old Lincoln for the high school. And, you know, for, for other needs, I think we, we would have to probably do some continued rental of, for instance, Coolidge House for a while. But, that's, so I would like to see Old Lincoln stay in the mix while we're still working on this.
Ms. Stone?
So, leaving aside Selectman Daly's visions of, of what could be done with Old Lincoln, I do strenuously disagree with that vision. But, but I actually wanted to, to speak to the advantages that I see in these two school, in these two sites in particular. And they are that neither one is renovating an existing building. And that gives us a tremendous opportunity in Brookline because it means we can work with the community to build new and to build not only, it's an opportunity not just to build a new school, but to build a great new building. And there are so many people in Brookline so devoted to what it means to build a great new building, from the green opportunities to the interesting uses of space opportunities to, to just the, just all of the things that that presents us. I just see a much more vibrant community process and community involvement in building a new school, and both of these sites give us that opportunity. So I would really encourage us to explore them as the sites to consider.
Before, before we have continued discussion of these options, I'm wondering if there are questions from the board and then from the public related to this question? Then I'll go to the public. Susan?
Specifically related to this question?
To, yeah.
Cara?
Were there other questions about the site selection that might help us in, in the discussion?
Well, there was a question, what areas in the town have the largest school population? And would it not make sense to build a new school in that area? And I think Cara can also speak to this, but I think that was the intent of the initial target area map, is that those are the areas with most of the school population. And so, we did indeed look at sites within the part of town where that was. Okay. Let's see. Others that kind of relate directly to that, let's see. In evaluating the quarter-mile for walking distance, did you use distance as the crow flies or actual distance required to walk? And I, I think, yeah. And so, there are two pieces to that. I think the initial target areas had kind of ridge lines shown around Corey Hill and other places, Summit Avenue, where it was, it was difficult. So we took that into account in terms of school assignment, is that correct? And so, while the quarter-mile is the quarter-mile in the circle, looking at school assignment and what were those difficult kind of barriers to movement were taken into account when we looked at school sites. Okay. Let's see.
And just to note, the quarter-mile was a planning department estimate. That is not a school committee policy or anything like that. That was a...
It's just based on kind of good planning.
It's as the crow flies because that's how you do it easily. Not, but you cannot actually map every child's walking pattern.
I'll also throw the reminder out again not to fixate on the redistricting maps. Those are just illustrations. If any of these sites happen, we would be going through a full public process and full evaluation. And what you see there may not, and will probably not be, what happens in reality.
And can I just underscore that as strenuously as possible? Anyone in this room, please tell all your friends. And if you're watching online, tell all your friends. Because the process of doing this is there are multiple public meetings, you sit there with maps, you move lines house by house. I mean, it's incredibly detailed. And the buffer zone process, I don't know how many meetings there were. People at this table have scars on their back from it. It was a wonderful exercise in democracy, and this was a planning department set of estimates for like, is this even reasonable? So, please tell all your friends, do not anchor on these redistricting maps. They are just to assume, can, is this even possible? So, some of them are gerrymandered and look insane, so just please know that.
No, I just want to quickly add though, when you say "we," I think you mean the school committee? Because that's...
We don't, so, do you want to talk about this, Rebecca? Because it's not only a school committee committee that does redistricting.
So typically, when we have looked at, we haven't done a full redistricting forever. So, so what you look at is the process that we've used for drawing the buffer zone lines. And it, it is in fact created by the school, it's an ad hoc committee created by the school committee. That's exactly right. But it always necessarily involves members of the school's community, a principal is always there, there's a parent always there. We always involve planning, we always involve...
Can you do it?
Even people like me.
I think Neil did it.
That was my first involvement.
Selectman Brute, when he was on the advisory committee. So it's a, it's, it is a broad and inclusive process. It is always done in open session.
I'm just trying to say to people, don't send your emails on redistricting to the selectmen.
Don't send them at all. Don't send them at all. The answer is, these are not the final maps. We can't go down that road because that's not what this is. That's not, that's not fair to ask of Civic Moxie, it's not fair to ask of Cara, that's not what this, what this was.
There will be lots and lots of time for those discussions.
Right. They were meant as a starting point to understand how all of these worked and compared to each other.
Right.
And there, you know, a lot of thought went into them, but they're not final by any means.
Ms. Pollak?
On, on the narrow question about the quarter-mile radius, which was drawn, as we've heard, in a circle, I would just, off of the observation that in the, the whole sort of now 30-year-old new urbanism movement that looks at walkability and looks at American towns pre-World War II and before interstate highways and all of that, very often the standard of measurement is a half-mile radius. So, the quarter-mile radius is really at the, the close, easy end of what, of contemporary definitions of walkability. So then, if you say it's quarter-mile as the crow flies, it is really a, a, a good measure of a walk, of a reasonable walk even for, for very short legs.
That's what I was going to say, for very short legs. Because we live within a quarter of a mile of Driscoll, and it's .6 to actually get there for my, my tiny little legs, my, my children's little legs.
And they walk.
So anyway, and they walk.
And it's more than half a mile.
And we want, right. So, so let's just, so the quarter of a mile, we're going to leave it.
Susan?
I'm going to read some others just about some of the other sites because it's related. The Parsons Field Site appears to have been rejected due to high costs of relocating Northeastern to a new site. If Northeastern were paid fair market value, would that resolve the issue? So, eminent domain, if they didn't agree to the sale of that site, and they've just done a major kind of rehabilitation and restoration there, you, by law, you have to not only pay the fair market value, but find a suitable site, a replacement site, which, you know, is a big barrier there. And considering that along with where it was located, those two things together kind of weighed and pulled it out of the top considerations for site. Let's see. Cara answered this, were costs of relocating town uses, particularly the valuable uses made of Old Lincoln School considered? Yes, they're kind of listed in the considerations in terms of what that, what they were. Will all six options alleviate the current school problem in the same way in terms of over, you know? And I think all six options do because all six options are 100,000 square feet, they're, you know, they're a 550-student school. So they do.
And just to be clear, that's growth in North Brookline and in South Brookline, just so people know. We're not only talking, these, the, yes, these sites are where they are, but they do solve North and South Brookline by, by... and South Brookline by design.
Our timeline's much larger for mixed-use schools. So if you're talking about timeline from the initial decision to go ahead to completion of construction, I would say that the mixed-use school and the concept, theme-based schools are going to be longer because they're not the kind of business as usual here. And they take partnerships. So all of the mixed-use schemes that we presented, looking at the Village School and the Harvard Street School, would be, would take longer because both of those really depend on partnership. Certainly the Village School with Stop and Shop depend on a partnership with the existing use. You can't do that if they don't want to go ahead and do a partnership and a rebuild. So that's going to be more complex and both of them have phasing, so even the construction phasing might be, look different. Were losses of tax revenues and impact on tax laws included as a cost? So they were not included in the actual construction costs, the conceptual costs, but they were included in the considerations for each project. And we actually, Kara and the town did estimates, Kara did estimates of what kind of potential future redevelopment of commercial sites that loss of revenue might be. And so we have looked at that. And those are not actually redacted from the report right now, so you can see what those are for each site. Let's see. Will the night school only solve the expected growth in the next five to six years or also alleviate the current problem of the amount of students in current schools?
The, you built it on 650 kindergarteners, right?
Right.
So it's that, so this would alleviate the conditions except for the ones I mentioned earlier.
Okay. And someone wanted the clarification of how schools define suboptimal space.
So there are a variety of definitions. The short answer is that they are not ideal, but they are not bad enough that we would absolutely say you cannot run a classroom here. Okay? So it's something without, you know, a classroom without windows. Or I think there's one without windows, right? There was, I mean, there's one kind of in basements where you walk in and the first thing you see is a wall and you have to kind of go around it to get to the classroom. You know, pedagogy has not impacted. It's not great, but you can still run a good classroom, you know, pedagogical experience there. There were some that were bad enough that they were actually impacting pedagogy. So those were the ones that we for sure tried to build for in the devotion project, alleviate a number of those. And Dr. Connolly can explain what those are. But anyway, and then there are smaller classrooms, right? There's an undersized issue. You know, is it small enough that it impacts pedagogy? You know, maybe, probably not, especially if you take out, you know, make that a smaller class size because it's a smaller classroom. So anyway, there are a variety of definitions. We did have a first pass at this from Peter Rowe, the former deputy superintendent for finance administration. There were a number of questions about it, and so those were being dealt with. And I think Mary Ellen Dunn, who is his replacement, is going to take a whack at those with Dr. Connolly to see if there are any more that we absolutely need to prioritize at the top of the list versus say, you know, what it's, given all of the other things we're trying to do, is probably not something we're going to address.
There's something related. Where did the 550 student capacity for a night school come from? Why not 650 or 700?
Right. So a four, I mean, a four-section school is certainly something that if we went there could be looked at. But I think the initial idea was a three-section school, especially for some of these properties. That's my understanding.
I think it was a three-acre. We're looking at three, three and a half. We're looking at three, three and a half acres and a three-section school fits more easily on three acres of property. A four-section school would need a much larger footprint.
So two other questions perhaps to answer. And there are others here, but they're not directly related to this question, so we're trying to focus. Would we have to preserve the parking on the TJ Maxx site? Would they give, would they be willing to give that up? So the answer is yes, that they need to be able to conduct business there. And so that parking has to be replaced spot for spot. And if we left the TJ Maxx site and were redeveloping the parking, and so if we didn't leave the TJ Maxx site, we would have had to find an alternative site for the store as well. So within all of those mixed-use schemes, all of the schemes really, we were trying to balance getting the appropriate parcel size for the school with the minimal amount of disruption or other challenges that had to be overcome around relocation of existing uses. Why can't construction, development costs and related assumptions and info on costs included and excluded be disclosed? Disclosing would not compromise negotiations. I think that has to be answered by-
Yeah, that's not, that's not the advice we got from council.
Okay. I think that's probably it around this issue. Should we?
The next round are all kind of disparate, so what direction do you want to head in?
Are there any that you feel like rise to the top at this point or can they be dealt with online given the lateness of the hour?
Yeah, let me just try to run through. There are questions about, basically about our policy and what the rules are for residential housing and how to offset those. That's something I'd like to deal with online.
Okay.
Very specifically. I don't think that's kind of how do we, in the future, perhaps, deal with some enrollment pressures. I will, I can't help but say though that over the last 10 years, our housing units, as counted by the census, has actually gone down. Our school enrollment is going through the roof. We have construction permits all the time. Most of them are porch renovations, tearing down a two-story house, a two-unit house to put up a three-unit house. The census has errors, but when it comes to, you know, what, that's the data that the state looks at for affordable housing caps. And so our housing units overall have gone down in the last 10 years. I do think that we are seeing a bubble of development pressures related to 40B. And the closer we get to our 10%, the faster we're going to see everybody try to skate across the finish before getting there. So we are going to see, I think, a ramping up. Okay, no, sorry. That's 40B. There was two questions about the high school, where are things with the high school at the current site or new site? And how does the high school process interplay with the night school setting?
Yeah, I mean, the short answer is we submitted an SOI to the MSBA, which is Alphabet Soup, a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We're hoping to get an answer back, Mr. Kleckner, this December. So we'll have a lot more information then. We've been asked, I may as well answer it now, we've been asked if we are not invited into partnership for the high school, what would we do? Would we advance this night school idea ahead of the high school idea? And I don't think I've heard any support for that. I think a lot of the discussion that I've heard is about resubmitting the high school, given that that is a much bigger project and a more expensive project and a pressing project as well. But that has not been decided. That's just been sort of watercooler talk. But anyway, we will find out in December. I'll go from there.
And then there's a question, did any of these site proposals take into account probable future large-scale developments such as the Durg and Waldo site in Coolidge Corner, the new Dummer Street development and the Crown and Shield development, which is a 40B? So this is a very important question, it's a good one. So as far as the total number of, good job Lauren. As far as the, as far as the total number of households with children in them that were modeled for purposes of GIS and, you know, kind of filling up each school, they were the same. It was 550 additional schoolchildren flatline, based on school projections from school administration. However, when it came to modeling where are those kids going to pop up, we did a couple of things. We said households, and these are assumptions because we don't have a crystal ball, but households that have schoolkids in them now are likely to have schoolkids in them, are more likely to have schoolkids in the future. Households that have preschoolers now, whose addresses we have and who GIS department, who did a bulk of this work, was able to locate, we said that's a probable location for growth. And then the third probable location for growth is where we know developments have been permitted or are, you know, under construction as we speak. So to answer your, it affects the mapping, but not the overall school capacity. So for example, we did include Hancock Village, we included the Dummer Street because it's under construction, as well as Crown and Shield. Durg and Waldo, I did not. We do not have a proposal and I am hoping that it's mixed-use at least.
But just to be clear on that, Kara, there are two appendices in here. One appendix talks about 650 kindergarteners. That 650 kindergarteners does not, just to clarify, does not include data from a different appendix. The different appendix said that there are going to be, what's it, 180, 180 K through eight children potentially from things? That is not included in the 650.
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's right. They're kind of totally separate things.
Right.
Scott?
I have a question specifically about the Dummer Street housing. When you, when you looked at the number of children projected to be in there, it says that you used the trustman apartments. Many of those apartments are for people with disabilities or for the elderly. And I'm wondering how in building that size you came up with the number you did unless you were counting all of the trustmen and dividing by the total number.
We did also speak with Brookline Housing Authority in doing these numbers. It's important for us for several reasons to understand, and it's something Fran Price used to keep track of, you know, way back. So we have kind of long-term data of units that are restricted besides income, whether it's for seniors or for veterans or that kind of thing. So I would say in concert with BHA. There's one more question here, did any of these, oh, sorry, that's not the one. Can you clarify eminent domain relocation? Are you saying you have to pay fair market value and also buy the replacement land or just the cost of relocating that business? That's a good question. I am not an eminent domain attorney. We do have one on staff with town council who so far has given us very good advice. We do need to pay fair market value for the property separately, any uses that have to be relocated, we would be responsible for paying for. So let's give the example very quickly of TJ Maxx. We would be paying the property owner, who's different from TJ Maxx, fair market value. If TJ Maxx, you know, needed to relocate, which in our concepts we're not showing, if we showed something else, we would need to pay for them to relocate. We would not need to pay their monthly lease that they're paying the property owner currently, but we would need to find that site for them.
So the question we're getting asked a lot, given the season, is the Lars Anderson warrant article that's in front of town meeting. So do you want to just address the relationship between the sketch on the Isabel School property and the warrant article boundaries?
Because we didn't know what the result of that warrant article was going to be. We still, oh, sorry. What we did was we put the school and the related kind of onsite, you know, probably K through two playgrounds, trying to place it. We put that in an area that is outside of the proposed restricted area for Article 97 so that it would, it would work either way. I will say, there are other options for the school at Lars Anderson, but we worked within those constraints, knowing what the discussion was within the town. And also really trying to limit incursion on open space within the site. Does that answer the question? So here we are, and the school is right along the border of the Boston property and the Brookline property. All of it is owned by Brookline. But we've kind of tucked it in. So it really did direct what the building configuration is because we were trying to fit it within. And there's a curved line, it's a little bit hard to see, I'm not sure I have a laser pointer here. There's a curved line that follows the restriction. Does that go at the top? This curved line here is the restriction line. This is outside of that open space, the proposed warrant article. And so we've kept everything within this.
There is a, the Lars Anderson Auto Museum is a historic building or not?
Yes, and that's right here. So we've kept that. There's another building that we were told. So there was quite a bit of consultation with the historic commission with staff about what, what is, you know, historic in this part of the site. And so we've kept, we've worked around those historic elements and then have tried to incorporate in. This is the relocation of the DPW shed. This isn't where it is right now, as well as some existing buildings that would have to stay.
And so one of the things that I think we're going to get asked is if, you know, if that line were moved, we've already heard this, if it were moved a little bit, is this the best building you can build, basically in this general vicinity? Or were you trying to hue very closely and build, basically right up against a couple of lines? Because I think, I don't, I don't know if there's any support for building at the top of the hill and the whole, you know, the whole thing. But there definitely are other options in this part of where the sheds are. And I guess it just, it seems like a gerrymandered building around a line.
It is, it is. It is not the best. I'm not sure, no, it's not the best-
Okay.
-possible site that you could build.
Even in, even in that little area, is what you're saying? Okay.
I don't think so. It would need some more investigation. That's a bit premature, but that's not where we originally put it. And so there is gerrymandering that's going on here. We know it can work, whether it's the best solution design-wise or even making use of the site or relation to the open space, no.
Okay. And you're, can you just explain for people why you're on the Brookline side and not on the Boston side?
So evidently the state regulations, if you're going to get MSBA funding, as we understand it, for a Brookline school, the school has to be on town of Brookline property. Because it was one of the first questions we asked, could a night school be adjacent in some way? But this is where it comes up. And so this is the Boston-Brookline border right here. So the DPW building can be there.
Right. There's also another issue then, Boston would have design authority and zoning.
And they will, they will indeed have permitting, you know, authority over a relocated DPW, but not the school.
But we'd still have to go through it for all those pieces. We have to go through the Boston process for anything we build on the Boston side, is that basically the idea?
That's correct.
So regardless of MSBA. And this really is, again, back to the idea of, you know, high school versus night school use, this really is only the size of a, of a 550 child, however you define it, building. It's not larger than-
If I could say, and I was, I was conscious of how much time I was taking, but both the scheme and the Cottage Farm scheme really open up a wealth of opportunities around green building, not only green in terms of sustainable construction methods and materials, but where they're located and thinking about the relationship of the school to the natural environment and to the open space and how that feeds into the curriculum and what that is and how, how open space becomes accessible to a lot of schoolchildren. And by extension, their families and kind of community. And so we think that there's a wealth of opportunities in these two schemes about really thinking deeply about what that means. So we do think there are opportunities here and I think there's room to explore, you know, where this building would be that would enhance Lars Anderson and the overall enjoyment of it and understanding of it as a historic landscape.
That's very helpful because I think we are trying to build with a, you know, long-term vision in mind, 50-year vision, not a, you know, squeeze it in, is it technically possible sort of idea.
So I'd like to propose-
I'm sorry, Neil, I need to add one piece of information to that.
And that is that, and Erin has brought this up in some of her discussions, I do not have
the map with me right now, but everybody needs to understand that there is also a preservation restriction at the top of the hill, which Erin has followed this boundary line when it gets over here. So the entire top of the hill, with the exception of where the mansion used to be up by the parking lot, is all under a preservation restriction, meaning that Kara would probably be the best person to explain that more. But, you know, this goes beyond zoning, beyond our local laws or permitting, it's a property restriction. And any building there would need some serious review by the state mass historic. Is there anything else I should say? Okay.
Can you repeat that? Just requires-
It requires substantial negotiation, she said. But how big was the house? I picked up on that house.
We did, you know, we looked at the old drawings, the site plans and the photographs as much as we could. It was substantial and there were the sunken gardens there as well. They were all, I'm just going to say it, obliterated. And so, you know, there's a lot of that landscape. I cried actually when I looked at all of those photographs. It was substantial.
So that it could be a possibility. Thank you.
I'd like, I think we're ready for a vote. It's starting to get late. And I'm going to- propose a motion, and I'll accept an amendment, and then we'll vote on the amendment, and then the main motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, the, my motion is, staff is directed to focus their efforts for additional due diligence and analysis at this time for the following two sites identified in the ninth elementary school site identification study. The first one is Site A, the Cottage Farm School, and the second one is Site F, the so-called Isabel School.
Second, okay. I'll move to amend to include, I'm gonna say the old Lincoln School, because I don't think the Walnut Street people want us to think of Walnut Street as the main entrance, as a concept school.
So, first, we'll, we'll vote on the motion to...
You need to ask for a second.
Second? I'll second. No motion should fail for lack of a second.
Thank you, Neil.
Yes?
I just wanted to know one thing for the committee. I'm probably going to abstain from the vote. I think it could be viewed as not a vote for two of six, but two out of the entire field that was looked at.
Oh.
And I represent and work for one of the, the owners of one of those sites.
Okay. So, first is the motion to amend, and I'll, I'll, we'll poll the two boards separately. So, I'll first poll the Board of Selectmen, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
No.
Selectman Green.
No.
Chair votes no.
Mr. M. Ms. Stone?
No.
Mr. Weber is gonna abstain?
No.
Mr. Pollak? I vote no, I'm sorry. Ms. Scotto? Ms. Schalbsky?
That was a good try. No.
No.
Mr. Chang, okay.
Okay. So, the main motion is for the two sites to be the focus of our due diligence and analysis.
Ask for discussion. Is there final discussion?
Any final discussion?
The only thing that I would like to say is that this is not a final decision.
Right.
Just so we're really clear. The motion, we talked about, Neil and I talked about this wording very carefully, and it's, staff is directed to focus their efforts for additional due diligence on these two sites. It is not saying that the other four are out forever and ever. It is saying that this seems to be the focus of our, of our efforts. We're gonna hear from the public for the next couple of months, and we will likely take a much more specific motion later. But, at this point, it's a, and it's a statement of preference, hopefully strong preference, but we're not, it's not a formal vote to exclude. Is that fair?
That is fair, and that is the intent. So, it's...
So, maybe, Ms. Daley, you can convince somebody out there.
So, I'll poll first the Board of Selectmen, Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. M.
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Mr. Weber abstains?
Abstain.
Mr. Pollak?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ms. Scotto?
Aye.
Schalbsky?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. So, Kara, can you remind us of
Yes.
the public process going forward?
I think this is it.
Nope, that's not it.
Oh, you're right, sorry. So, over the next couple of weeks is what you're focusing on.
Between now and December.
And again, this is on the town website. If you go on the town's just homepage right now, at the bottom, where we put, kind of, most frequently asked items, you'll see a link to the ninth school study, and on that page is the entire study, this presentation, both presentations will be up there tonight, and also on there is the public meetings. So, the public meetings that we're talking about, again, is Tuesday, November 3rd, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's in the dining room, which is the lower level of 11 Pierce, the health building. That's the first, kind of, open-house-style meeting.
It's not going to be a structured lecture, kind of, thing?
There's a Facebook collection to it.
There'll be posters?
Yeah, so we're basically gonna break apart the report into different topics and discussions. Having these questions tonight will help us, kind of, figure out how best to break it down.
Folks will be there, you can ask questions of...
Of real staff.
Right.
The second, the second meeting will be Thursday, November 12th, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. We're trying to capture the before-work, before-drop-off crowd, and that'll be in this room. And then, we've got December...
Kara, are we gonna do one in the evening that night also?
We are not.
We're not?
The evening one is gonna be November 3rd.
Okay.
The morning one is gonna be November 12th.
Okay, great.
Those are the two open-house-style meetings.
Okay.
And then, December 3rd is probably a more formal public hearing format.
Public hearing, right.
And then, there's going to be a present...
If that's a, if that's a school committee night, is that appropriate to have the big public hearing on the night, when you guys might not be able to attend?
No, they are, it's going to be a joint...
That would be a meeting.
We will attend.
Okay. I thought you were saying you had a conflict.
No.
No, no, no.
Okay. We would do what we did tonight. Tonight, we did an hour-and-a-half meeting as fast as humanly possible, and then this.
And then, in addition to those public meetings and the public hearing, there's going to be a presentation to the advisory committee on November 2nd, a presentation to the preservation commission on the 10th, November 10th, and a presentation to the park and recreation commission on November 10th.
And so, then the idea is that we would meet back in joint executive session, oh, sorry, joint open session the week of December 15th, is that right? I think the selectmen have a meeting Tuesday, we have a meeting Thursday, so one of those two nights, we'll figure out who, you know, who can attend, and we'll, sort of, summarize all this public feedback and figure out where we are. Okay.
Okay.
At the risk of opening up a can of worms, any other burning issues that absolutely have to get addressed tonight? All right.
Unless adjourned.
Adjourned. Thank you very much.